Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the City of Warrenville City Council Regular Meeting for November 6th, 2017. I have a roll call, please.
Alderman Ashower.
Here.
Alderman Berry.
Here.
Alderman Bavir.
Here.
Alderman Davalos.
Here.
Alderman Goodman.
Here.
Alderman Hoffman is excused. Alderman Widener.
Here.
Alderman Wilson.
Here.
Thank you, Emily. Would you please stand as you're able and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(inaudible)
Every once in a while, we get the opportunity to honor other public service volunteers. Tonight, we have the opportunity to honor our school board members. So, we have a couple with us tonight, Brad Paulson and Gina Erickson. Please, Erickson, please come up and receive this proclamation. In honor of your service to the community, which I think most people don't understand the depth of that service and what it requires. So, we would really like to honor that tonight and let you know how much we appreciate it. So, hence the proclamation. School Board Members' Day, November 15th, 2017. Whereas, school board members are elected to sit in trust for their diverse communities and in that capacity are charged with meeting the community's expectations and aspirations for the public education of their children. And whereas, school board members are entrusted with the guardianship and wise expenditure of scarce tax dollars, they are responsible for maintaining and preserving the buildings, grounds, and other areas of the school district that the community has put in their trust. And whereas, school board members are responsible for providing leadership that ensures a clear, shared vision of public education in their schools, that sets high standards for the education of all students, and requires the effective and efficient operation of their districts. And whereas, school board members adopt public policy to give voice to that leadership and employ a superintendent to administer the board policy, they are also responsible for the regular monitoring of the district's performance and compliance with state policy. And whereas, school board members selflessly volunteer countless hours to public service with no compensation other than the satisfaction of the job. And whereas, employers are supportive of their employees who serve as school board members, generously lending support and time, employers give their employees the opportunity to better serve the needs of the school districts and citizens they represent through sometimes tremendous sacrifice to the employer. And whereas, decisions made by school board members directly impact the quality of life in their communities, placing them at the front line of American democracy, now therefore be it resolved that I, David L. Brummel, Mayor of the City of Warrenville, proclaim November 15th, 2017, as School Board Members' Day as a way to honor those citizens who devote so much of their time and energy for the education of our children. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Gina. Please say a few words.
Yeah, sure. First off, thank you. Are you District 200 students back there? All right. Knew there was a reason we came. First off, you know, we're very fortunate in District 200. We get a lot of accolades, awards, credit, national rankings, but really, I think, the school districts are a reflection of the community that we get our teachers and our staff and our parents and our students from. And so, really, it's a bigger issue. It's a bigger reward we get just as part of the different communities that we work in. So, we want to thank you for helping, you know, you're in the City of Warrenville, making your community so, so attractive for people and businesses to come in and providing the services that we take advantage of as a school district to do the successful things that we do and turn out future graduates from probably Wheaton-Warnville South High School. So, just a thank you back to you for the evening. You know, I joked beforehand that there's two days a year where school board members are liked by everybody in the room. Today, in high school graduation. So, we got one more day coming next May. Until then, we'll just keep doing our job. And again, thank you for your support along the way.
Thank you, Brad. Gina, thank you. Okay, this is the part of our meeting we set aside for citizens' comments. We have one person signed up this evening, Mr. Bob Seibert.
Bob Seibert, Albright Court. The Village of Mount Prospect and the City of Warrenville have some common elements. Both began TIF districts in 1985 and 1986. The Village of Mount Prospect continued this past year with their downtown TIF district that identified the same properties that were in the first TIF district. This is similar with Warrenville in TIF III, when it identified and included some of the same properties that were in TIF II. The Northwest Suburban High School District 214 entered into a lawsuit against the Village of Mount Prospect for having the same properties in a subsequent TIF. The problem is not the school district or the village. The problem is the TIF statute. The current TIF law allows taxing districts to steal funds from the taxpayers. Example, School District 200, after TIF II was closed, has received more than four and a half million dollars of undeserved funds. The Assistant Superintendent, Bill Farley, when I discussed this with him, said, "If they're going to give me more than $500,000 a year, I'm going to take it." No reason, no justification, other than the failings of the TIF statute. You should remember also that in TIF IV, Naperville School District 204 and School District 200 did not vote for that TIF district. It's two-thirds of the individuals representing the taxpayers. Three years ago, almost to the day, the City of Warrenville chose to hide from the truth about TIFs. So, now I ask the City of Warrenville how they will protect the taxpayers.
Thank you, Bob. We'll move on to official and staff comments, beginning with the mayor. A couple of things that I'll ask the chief to give some information on, our new prescription drop box in the Police Department and the seminar that's coming up on fentanyl and heroin. So, chief?
Thanks, Mayor. Recently, we've had installed a prescription recycling drop box in the lobby of the Police Department, and it's up and running for operations. So, if you have any unused prescription drugs that you wish to safely dispose of and want to have them recycled, we do this through a private vendor that comes out and recycles these prescription drugs. You can do so at the Police Department on Monday through Friday between 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m., and then Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. We ask that you put the prescription drugs in either a baggie or a paper bag in order to dispose of them in the box. You just pull the handle down, put them in, and close the handle back up. And please, no hypodermic syringes or sharps, which would be needles, would be accepted there. And also, we're going to be having a community informational seminar on heroin and opioids in general, and that will be on Wednesday evening, November 15th, at 7:00 p.m. here in the City Council Chamber. We will have subject matter experts from the Illinois State Police and also from Warrenville Youth and Family Service and Rosecrans, which is a not-for-profit addiction recovery service. Just ask that you contact the Police Department if you're interested, so we know the amount of seating to prepare for. We are also going to record this, and it'll be available on YouTube for people that can't attend.
And it will be here at City Hall?
That's correct.
At 7:00 p.m.?
7:00 p.m. on Wednesday, November 15th.
November 15th.
Right here in the Council Chamber.
Great. Thanks, chief. Yes, Alderman?
Yes, I had a question for the chief on the first item. I got a question from a resident, and I didn't know the answer, but hopefully you do. Is the medicine drop box for all medication or just prescription medication? I know that, you know, over the counters, you know, might not be as dangerous, but you probably also don't want them in the water supply?
Yeah, we'll take them as long as they're properly packaged, you know, as long as they're in some type of container, paper bag, baggie, what have you, they can be put in there.
Okay, so any kind of drugs?
Sure.
Medicine. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. And special thanks to Kay McKean at Scars for providing the grant that provided the box for us. So, sometimes it's good to work together. Good things happen. The only other thing I'd like to remind you of is our Veterans' Day, excuse me, ceremony on the 11th, Saturday, the 11th, at 11:00 a.m. out here at the Veterans Memorial. Everyone is invited. The hosts are VFW Post 8081 and American Legion Post 589. So, hope to see you there. And that's all I have this evening. Clerk?
Nothing, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Treasurer?
I want to encourage everyone to check out the City of Warrenville website. Along with the latest Treasurer's Report, there's a wealth of information on city activities, events, and opportunities. So, check it out, and anything that you need to know about the city pretty much is on that website.
Thank you, Larry. Alderman. Alderman Bavir.
Just a reminder, the Lions Fireman's Turkey Raffle will be this Saturday at 7:00 o'clock at Fire Station 1.
Great. Thank you. Alderman Goodman?
Yeah, I have two items. One's from the school district. Wheaton-Warnville South is having their annual play this weekend. Neil Simon's Rumors will be at South, November 9th, 10th, and 11th at 7:00 p.m. So, you can get your tickets online or at the door, and should be a good time. Secondly, the Forest Preserve is having its Autumn Hay Rides at St. James Farm this Friday and Saturday from 6:00 to 7:30. In addition to the hayride, there'll be cocoa and smores by a fire, and you can get more information and tickets on the Forest Preserve website.
Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? Alderman Widener?
It's a relatively short agenda tonight, but five of the items that we'll be covering have to do with boards and advisory committees that staff a lot of volunteers or that have a lot of volunteers on as members. And I'd just like to say thanks to those volunteers that are staffing, are helping us with the Police Pension Board, the Tourism and Arts Commission, the Environmental Advisory Commission, the Board of Fire and Police Commission, and of course, the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals. All have large numbers of volunteers on their group, and we certainly appreciate their time and energy for the cause that they're involved with. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. That's 70-some people, and all of our volunteer commissions are fully staffed. And generally, when we get a resignation, if someone leaves, we have quality people stepping up to fill the void. So, we've been very, very fortunate. So, thank you for highlighting that, Alderman. We have a lot of good people that help us get the job done and keep our taxes low. City Administrator, oh, I'm sorry, Alderman Davalos.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind everybody that we have a gem in our backyard, which is Fermilab. And most of you know about it, and you may have been to the open house, and you may think it is little particles and protons and dark energy and dark matter, and that's all that they're concerned about. But for access to the public, for other things, they are concerned about all that science. But in addition, they have an amazing series. They have an artist series. They have a lecture series, and very top quality. There are musicians. There are dance groups. There are plays. There are lectures that are accessible to people that didn't even take Physics 101. It is, it's really a wonderful place, very inexpensive. I saw Alderman Goodman and her family on Saturday night when there was a theater group, very well-known actually from London and New York, that makes classics, classic writing books available to the public, tries to do them so you understand them. And they did Jane Austen's Sensibility, and it was so first-class and wonderful and absolutely hysterical. And so, I just thought, wow, I wonder how many people really know that this, these kinds of programs exist in the community and don't cost very much, and they are very first-quality. So, I'm just reminding you that Fermilab, their website is F-N-A-L, right, dot org? It was dot com. It's not a dot org?
Dot gov.
Dot gov. There you go. And just check it out. They have lots of things happening, and it's in our backyard. Thank you.
Also, they are the most accessible site of its nature in the United States as far as a national site. You're able to walk in there, ride your bikes, whatever. It's a very nice place to visit, and it's very open. Just watch the signage and don't go where it says, "No unauthorized personnel." I don't know how I know that. I think someone told me that.
[laughing]
Alderman Ashower?
Veterans' Day is coming up this next weekend, and I'd just like to thank all the veterans for their service and their sacrifice on our behalf and the rest of the nation.
Thank you. And we'll do it officially on Saturday morning. Thank you, Alderman. Anyone else? Okay, State Administrator?
I have nothing to add tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And City Attorney?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. We'll move on then to the approval of the agenda for this evening. Alderman Widener?
I move to approve the agenda for the November 6th, 2017 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second. Motion and a second. Any discussion? Alderman Ashower?
I'd like to remove 6E.
E? Okay. Motion or second or agree to that alteration?
Agreed.
Okay. Then, let's vote on the amended agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Approval of the minutes. We have one set of minutes this evening. Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the minutes of the October 16th, 2017 City Council Regular Meeting.
Second. Okay, any discussion of those minutes? Again, seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Minutes are approved. The consent agenda for this evening. Item 6A, Accept Staff Recommendation, Waive Second Reading. Pass Ordinance Number 02017-69, Anexing the Property Located at 3-South 314 Home Avenue Into the City of Warrenville. B, Accept Plan Commission Recommendation, Waive Second Reading. Pass Ordinance 02017-70, Approving Rezoning Upon Annexation From R1 to R4 For 3-South 314 Home Avenue. C, Accept Senior Civil Engineer Hawking's Recommendation, and Pass Resolution R2017-38, Accepting and Approving the Public Improvements Associated with the Gardner School Project, Reduce the Letter of Credit, and Waive the Two-Year Maintenance Period for Non-Stormwater Ordinance-Related Items. D, Accept Illinois Municipal League Request and Adopt Resolution R2017-39, Supporting Illinois Bicentennial Celebration, Marking the 200th Anniversary of the State. F, Receive and File Minutes of the Police Pension Board Regular Meeting Held on August 15th, 2017. G, Receive and File Minutes of the Tourism and Arts Commission Regular Meeting Held on September 14th, 2017. H, Receive and File Minutes of the Environmental Advisory Commission Regular Meeting Held on September 19th, 2017. I, Receive and File Minutes of the Board of Fire and Police Commission Regular Meeting Held on September 26th, 2017. J, Receive and File Draft Minutes of the Plan Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals Regular Meeting Held on October 19th, 2017. K, Receive and File Report of Invoices Paid Up to November 1st, 2017, in the amount of $97,264.42. And L, Authorized Expenditures for Invoices Due Honor Before November 30th, 2017, in the amount of $526,687.14.
It's not November 20th.
Excuse me?
You said 30th. It's November 20th.
I'm sorry, November 20th for item L. Thank you. John? Alderman Widener?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented by Mayor David Brummel.
Second.
Motion and a second. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ashower.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
The agenda is approved. We'll go back to item 6E. Alderman Ashower, did you wish to bring that forward?
Make a motion to approve Mayor Brummel's recommendation and appoint Richard M. Volkmer as city historian for the remainder of Mayor Brummel's current term of office in May 2021.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. Alderman Ashower?
The reason I pulled this, the, I didn't think much of it, and then I read Rich Volkmer's application, and I, my caution would be about an officially sanctioned political history of Warrenville. The, you know, just the fact that you wanted to point him as a historian, I wouldn't have any trouble with that. When I read what he says, it's "The History According to Rich," and not everybody agrees on that. And I think we should caution that that not happened in a political way.
Okay. We can always have "The History According to Stu" to balance it off.
Well, I'd be happy to write it, but I don't think you'd like it.
I don't know. It sounds interesting. Point counterpoint is always good. All right. Any other discussion on that item? Alderman Goodman?
I know that the former city historian published several books, and that they were very well-received. I know I have at least two of her books signed, which is marvelous. And she did an excellent job as city historian. I certainly hope that any city historian that we would pick would do an equally well-researched and thoughtful book about Warrenville. And I think that's the most we can hope for, but having editorial control over those books seems like it'd be beyond our scope.
And I did talk to the Historical Society before I made this appointment, and they are in favor, so. Okay, anyone else? Let's do a roll call, I guess.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Bavir.
Aye.
Alderman Berry.
Aye.
Alderman Goodman.
Aye.
Alderman Davalos.
Aye.
Alderman Widener.
Aye.
Alderman Ashower.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. We have nothing under a regular agenda, nothing under unfinished business. We do have one item of new business. Does someone want to make that motion, please? Alderman Berry.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the Branding Work Group's recommendation and approve the new City of Warrenville graphic brand identity logo.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bavir. We had significant discussion last time around. I think there have been a number of accommodations since then concerning the things that were brought up. Does anyone have any comments or recommendations here tonight before we vote? Natalia, you look so innocent there. Let's bring you into this. Our senior planner, Natalia, who's been intimately involved with this branding process. Natalia?
Thank you. Included with the agenda backup for the meeting tonight, you will see a new revised graphic brand identity, which is the city logo, that the Branding Work Group is recommending the City Council approve for the City of Warrenville. Specifically, I would like to point your attention to the back of the cover page. That's the page we're looking at. That's the logo. It was developed by the City Marketing Consulting, BDI Business District, Inc., based on input provided by a wide range of stakeholders, including elected officials, city staff, business leaders, residents, and various participants of this nine-month-long process. The logo design highlights outstanding natural features within and surrounding the City of Warrenville. The W symbol in green and blue is the cornerstone of this identity. And you can tell that it evolved from the prairie grasses. So, they are depicted, symbolized here. So, it also acknowledges the green belt of the forest preserve and open space that surrounds the City of Warrenville. The curvy font, Warrenville letter, word is, actually symbolizes the waters, that the DuPage River and lakes that surround the City of Warrenville. City staff plans to begin promoting the new Warrenville logo as soon as it is approved by the City Council, and that's what's on the request tonight. We plan to launch the branding as part of holidays, which is coming up December 1st, if everything goes well. So, staff is recommending to accept the Branding Work Group recommendation and approve the new city logo that is illustrated on the back of the front page of your packet.
Okay, questions for Natalia? If you make this approval, we're surrounded by communities that begin with W. We will own the W.
That is.
So, we've got that going for us.
Correct.
Among other things. Alderman Davalos?
Yes, I'd just like to say a couple of things. One is, I'm very grateful that our city staff and the branding group, when some of us had questions about this, were extremely responsive and brought people together. I came, other people came to share some of our thoughts. I thought people heard what we had to say. I thought it was a great brainstorming sort of a experience. And I just thought it worked well. So, I want to say thank you to everybody who was involved in entertaining that and didn't just discount some of the things we're saying. And the second thing, I, my initial reaction to this new logo is it's, and this was shared by other people, it is really punched up. It's modern. It's contemporary. So, we have this idea of our green space and our river and the outdoors and all the things that we love, and that were brought up by all the stakeholders. And yet, it's a modern kind of logo. It's not sleepy. It pops. And so, and of course, everybody knows that I love it with the word "naturally" there, and that will be there sometimes. And other times, when it's the city, it'll be the name of the community. And so, to me, it has a lot of flexibility. I enjoyed seeing what they did with the W in different ways, like that Fourth of July banner. I thought that was kind of interesting, and it just helped me to think of lots of ways we're going to be able to do it. And it seems very exciting to me. So, thank you for all the efforts of our group and the staff. I know you guys have worked super hard on this, and our branding group has worked super hard. And I personally am very satisfied with how it came out.
Thank you, Alderman. I would agree. A lot of work went into this. It's very exciting, and it's very well-done, and it dovetails very nicely with DuPage County's new branding efforts, as well as DCVBE, the DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau. So, we're kind of on the same page, and we're also kind of unique in that we really, really do fit what they've put together for us. It is about Warrenville, so. It is about Warrenville, so, good stuff. Alderman Goodman?
I wanted to say, although I know the, the main issue we're discussing today is the logo and approving that piece of it, that branding is, is a much bigger umbrella than just this one aspect of the plan and the program. And I know that the consultants focused their discussion about how this is sort of the shiny object. Everybody has an opinion on color, everybody has an opinion on, do they like it, do they not like it? But it's, it's one piece of a much larger whole. So, I hope that when we do the, the new branding unveiling, starting with holidays and going forward thereafter, that, you know, everybody who can get behind the idea of trying to promote Warrenville doesn't focus on, oh, do I like the exact shade of green in this logo, and, and get too hung up on the shiny object. The point is, we're, we're trying to spend some staff time and resources and, and public official effort and buy-in from the community, other public bodies, other businesses in town, and our residents, and get them behind the, the concept of promoting Warrenville as a great place to live, a great place to have a business, a great place to explore our natural areas, and that we can sort of get a message together that, that people will recognize as the Warrenville that they know and love. So, hopefully, we've done that, and hopefully, we'll be able to convey that going forward. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Alderman. Let's have a roll call, then. Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we have the need for a closed session this evening after our regular business, so could I have a motion and a citation, please? Alderman Berry?
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of five ILCS-120/2, parentheses, C, parentheses, six, the setting of a price for sale or lease of property owned by the public body, and five ILCS-120/2, parentheses, C, parentheses, eleven, litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of the particular public body has been filed and is pending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable or imminent.
Second.
Second by Alderman Bavir. Roll call, please. Alderman Berry?
Aye.
Alderman Goodman?
Aye.
Alderman Widener?
Aye.
Alderman Bavir?
Aye.
Alderman Davalos?
Aye.
Alderman Ashauer?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Okay, we'll, we'll be going into closed session at this point. We will not be conducting any business as we come out of closed session. And for the students in the audience, just so you can have one takeaway tonight, almost everything we discuss has to be done in public, but there are certain things by state statute that we're allowed to speak about off the record. That's what we're going to do later. So, what else did you learn? They said too much, there's not enough time to tell everyone, so, thanks for coming tonight, and come back again sometime. Thank you, everyone, for your attention. We'll see you next time around.